Good evening. Having reached the appointed time and place, I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome everyone who's here. And I'd like to ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Quiney.
Here.
Mrs. DeFort.
Here.
Mrs. Win Stanley.
Here.
Mrs. Mulvena.
Here.
Mr. McKinnon.
Here.
Mrs. Clark Pearson.
Here.
President Shiflett.
Here.
Excellent, we're here. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the approval of agenda items.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the May 14, 2018 agenda items as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
The motion and a second. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose no. And the motion is unanimous. Next, I would entertain a motion for the approval of consent agenda items.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the May 14, 2018 consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
The motion and a second. I will note that the consent agenda items this week are the April 23, 2018 regular meeting minutes, the May 5, 2018 governance retreat minutes, and the administrative contract renewal. So with motion and a second, is there any other discussion on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose no. And the motion is unanimous. That brings us to an outstanding portion of this evening's agenda, and really one of my favorite agenda items of the year, the Class of 2018 Top 25 Scholars, which I imagine is why the vast majority of you are here this evening.
I hope that's true.
And so with that, I would like to welcome Principal Mangram up to discuss this.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Metcalfe, Cabinet members. It's my true honor to be here tonight as Grand Ledge High School principal to honor 2018 Top 25 Scholars. You need to know, they're coming from track meets, they're coming from baseball games, they're going to concerts, they're coming from across, so they're all over the map. So they may be coming and going at any given point, I just want you to know that. That's who they are, not only from an academic perspective, but that's who they are as young people. They engage themselves in everything that they possibly can, so they're coming and going. I won't say anything other than they speak for themselves. These young people have spoken for themselves. There is nothing that I can say, they've already said it. So with that, we'll begin with number one, Oliver Zay, his parents Daniel and Eureka Zay, his academic achievements and honors are valedictorian, National Honor Society and AP Scholar. His extracurricular activities are band, German club, and marching band. And Oliver's future plans are to attend the University of Michigan and study engineering. Oliver? Number two, Michaela Donahue, her parents are David and Kelly Donahue. Her academic achievements and honors are salutatorian, National Honor Society, AP Scholar with honors, CAAC Senior Scholar Athlete Award. And her extracurricular activities are cross-country, track, soccer, calculus club, and pals. And Michaela's future plans are to attend the Air Force Academy and study biology and nursing. My mama bear comes out, so if I get a little frosty, forgive me. Oh, wrong one. You don't want glands? Alright, well that, alright, well we'll get you yours. We'll get, we'll get Michaela that, she doesn't want to be glen tonight, but number three is Glenn McDevitt, and his parents are Joe and Joy McDevitt. His academic achievements and honors are National Honor Society. His extracurricular activities are band and drama. And his future plans, Glenn plans to attend Michigan State University and is undecided on his field of study, but we do know that this is his certificate. Glenn? Number four is Victoria Judd, her parents are Dan and Sandy Judd. Her academic achievements and honors are Michigan Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association Individual All-State Award. Her extracurricular activities, as you guessed by now, are swimming. And her future plans are to attend Full Sail University and study video game art and design. Victoria? And number five, Gregory Stevens, his parents are Jason and Angie Stevens. His academic achievements and honors are National Honor Society, CAAC Scholar Athlete. That wasn't me. We'll have to give these out afterwards, because obviously they're not in order.
They're sticking.
Oh, gotcha. Alright, thank you, everybody. Gregory, I'm sorry. Gregory's parents are Jason and Angie Stevens. His academic achievements and honors are National Honor Society, CAAC Scholar Athlete, and an Eagle Scout. His extracurricular activities are band, cross-country, and track. His, Gregory's future plans are to attend Michigan State University and study secondary education, specifically social studies and special education. Gregory? Number six, Hannah DeSilva, Hannah's parents are Matt and Lori DeSilva. Her academic achievements and honors are National Honor Society and Academic Honor Role. Her extracurricular activities are drama, choir, captain of the soccer team, and pals. Hannah's future plans are to attend the University of Michigan and study biology. Hannah? Number seven is Nolan Fox, Nolan's parents are Alan and Mary Fox. His academic achievements and honors are Treasurer of the National Honor Society, Co-President of the DECA Club, and Lions Club Student of the Month. His extracurricular activities are band, captain of the boys varsity tennis team, and he was nominated in 2017 and 18 as the State of Michigan Outstanding Saxophone Soloist. Nolan's future plans are to attend the Ross School of Business at the University of Michigan and study finance and management. Nolan? Number eight, Cole Williams, parents Jeannie and Craig Williams. Cole's academic achievements and honors are National Honor Society and an AP Scholar. His extracurricular activities are tennis and four years academic all-conference in lacrosse. Cole's future plans are to attend Florida Southern College and study biochemistry and pre-medicine. And I think his mother has something to show. Number nine, Joseph Mullins, his parents are Kevin and Beth Mullins. His academic achievements and honors are National Honor Society, AP Scholar, MSU Honors College State Scholarship. His extracurricular activities are band, and his future plans are to attend Michigan State University and study pre-medicine. Number 10 is Tucker Boyer, his parents are Dan and Jennifer Boyer. His extracurricular activities are band. His future plans are to attend Saginaw Valley State University and study applied mathematics. Congratulations. Number 11, Sarah McNeely, her parents are Dan and Helen McNeely, and her academic achievements and honors are Capital Area Activities Conference All-Academic Award in Soccer, 4.0 GPA, top 10% in JFK Profile in Courage, Essay Contest, and her extracurricular activities are French Club, Soccer, Marching Band, Calculus Club, Statistics Club, National Honor Society, and pals. Sarah's future plans are to attend Ferris State University and is undecided on her field in the future. Sarah? Number 12, Olivia Belding, parents Jeff Belding and Michelle Kowalski. Olivia's academic achievements and honors are volleyball All-Academic Award. Her extracurricular activities are links, she plays volleyball on a national club team, and coaches volleyball camps. Olivia's future plans are to attend Michigan State University and study kinesiology. Congratulations, Olivia. Number 13, Christopher Norello, his parents are Christopher and Helen Norello. His academic achievements and honors are Quiz Bowl Captain and Quiz Bowl All-State. His extracurricular activities are National Honor Society, Political Club, and Drama Club. Christopher's future plans are to attend Michigan State University and study human biology. Congratulations, Christopher. Track meet, baseball, lacrosse, wherever, that's where Christopher is. Number 14 is Ryan Coche, his parents are Steve and Mary Jo Coche. His academic achievements and honors are principal, or yes, excuse me, principal trumpet in GLHS Wind Symphony, 2017 Eagle Scout, Jason Plight Memorial Scholarship recipient, 2017 Michigan Youth Arts Festival Brass Quintet Member. Ryan's extracurricular activities are marching band, musicals, National Technical Honor Society, and Spartan Youth Wind Symphony. Ryan's future plans are to attend Michigan State University and study mechanical engineering. Congratulations, Ryan. Number 15 is Carolyn Morgan, and her, Carolyn's parents are Thomas and Stephanie Morgan. Her academic achievements and honors are National Honor Society, CAAC All-Academic Award in Track. Her extracurricular activities are band, choir, musicals, marching band, track and field. And her future plans are to attend Grand Valley State University and study communications and global studies. Congratulations, Carolyn. Number 16 is Chandler Drake, and Chandler's parents are Christina Schaefer and Tim Drake. Academic achievements and honors are A Honor Role, Michigan High School Football Coaches Association Honorable Mention, Academic All-State, Delta Township Youth Person of the Year nominee, and Michigan Youth Arts Festival 2016 and 17. Chandler's extracurricular activities are football, calculus club, political club, National Honor Society, and Chandler's future plans are to attend Michigan State University and study computer engineering. Congratulations, Chandler. Number 17 is Jana Vukovich, and her parents are Kristi Vukovich and Mike. And her academic achievements and honors are 2017 Silver Key Scholastic Art Award Honorable Mention, 2018 Silver Key Scholastic Art Award, National Honor Society, Grand Ledge Lions Club Student of the Month, and GLHS Honor Role from 2014 to the present. Her extracurricular activities are student customer for Grand Ledge High School musicals, French Club, pals, Statistics Club, and National Honor Society. Jana plans to attend the University of Michigan to study theater design and production. Congratulations, Jana. Number 18, Hannah Schaefer, Hannah's parents are Jennifer and Michael Schaefer. Her academic achievements and honors are All-Academic Award in Cross-Country and Track, All-Conference Award in Cross-Country and Track, her extracurricular activities are National Honor Society, and Hannah plans to attend the University of Michigan and study medicine. Congratulations, Hannah. Number 19, Claudia Berio, her parents are Brad and Lisa. Her academic achievement honors are eight-time Academic All-Conference in Cross-Country and Track, and Academic All-State in Track. Her extracurricular activities are National Honor Society, and Claudia plans to attend Lansing Community College and study biochemistry. Congratulations, Claudia. Benjamin Koontz, his parents are Rachel and David, and his academic honors are Dean's List at Lansing Community College, Academic Honor Role for Cross-Country, and Swimming. Ben's future plans are to attend Michigan State University and study music of the humanities. Congratulations, Benjamin. Number 21, Nathaniel Nelson, his parents are Robert and Jennifer. His academic achievements and honors are All-Conference for Wrestling, NROTC Scholarship Award from Tim Wahlberg. His extracurricular activities are choir, marching band, Spartan Youth Wind Symphony, and track. Nathaniel's, Nathaniel plans to attend Eastern Michigan University or Penn State University and study naval architecture and marine engineering. Congratulations, Nathaniel. Number 22, Varsha Vinad, parents Sunita and Vinad Normit. Academic achievements and honors are Honor Role in AP classes. Extracurricular activities are band, marching band, calculus club, and P Club. Her future plans are to attend Michigan State University and study computer science engineering. Congratulations, Varsha. Number 23, Callahan Riggs, his parents are Elizabeth and Russell Riggs. His academic achievements and honors are Academic All-Conference in Football and Track, Honor Role, and Statistics Club President. His extracurricular activities are football and track. Callahan's future plans are to attend Michigan State University and study supply chain management. Congratulations, Callahan. Number 24, Reyna Estrada, parent Christina Estrada. Reyna's extracurricular activities are cross-country and track, and her future plans are to attend Roosevelt University and study political science. Congratulations, Reyna. And number 25, Lauren Meham, her parents are David Meham and Leah Demastri. Her academic achievements and honors are National Honor Society. She's been invited to the Michigan State University Academic Scholars Program. Her extracurricular activities are marching band and calculus club, and her future plans are to attend Michigan State University and study animal science. Congratulations, Lauren. Scholars, we cannot tell you, words cannot express our pride. I'll leave it at that. We're going to all have you come up and take a picture. We're going to have, put the tallest in the back and the shortest in the front, but we want to make sure we get your picture, so come on up if you will, please.
I wanted to congratulate that guy that got the NROTC, but he left so quickly.
Well, oh yeah, but, but the academy for the Air Force has only a small number of students that they accept in here.
Do you still live in the same house?
And I, I was just talking to the NR, one of the NROTC program managers.
We always, my house is bad.
They are decreasing the number of NROTC scholarships offered, because they always have to cover everything. So now what they're going to do is offer less time to study and fill it.
Yeah, no kidding.
That brings us to the DART Foundation check presentation for grant award.
Good evening, Board. You saw in the Board newsletter, the Board announcement that went out last Friday, that we were fortunate to receive a grant in the amount of $125,000 from the DART Foundation for technology improvements in our schools. And I am pleased tonight to introduce Emily Matthews. She is here from the DART Foundation. She's going to tell you a little bit about the foundation, and then we're going to get a big check, which is very exciting. So Emily, come on up.
And I'll keep it real brief, but I just want to start by saying that I was really moved to listen to all 25 of those students talk about all of their major accomplishments. I'll introduce myself in a second. I'll start there, I guess. I'm Emily Matthews, and I'm the manager of the DART Foundation in Mason, Michigan, and I oversee the DART families grant making in about 30 jurisdictions across the nation and also internationally. But I'm a 1994 high school grad, and just listening to all of those various accomplishments of all those students was really touching, you know, and it's almost like I just want to scrap my whole speech and talk about them and all of the different things, you know, it just really resonated with me. A lot of those things were things that I did. I was a University of Michigan undergrad grad, and I was valedictorian, a cross-country runner, I don't know. It touched me, and so I want to first of all, start by thanking the school board, and the educators, and the parents, and the kids. I mean, obviously, those are students that have an amazing future in front of them, but they're not the only ones in their class, right? And there are like tons of different multiple pathways to success, but I was just really touched by it. So with that, I'll get quickly into talking to you a little bit about the DART Foundation, and a little bit about this gift and what it's about. The DART Foundation was started in 1984 by WA Dart and his wife Claire. For those of you that don't know, WA Dart is the man that turned the sleepy little machine shop in Mason, Michigan into the 15,000-person international corporation that it is today. They started a family foundation in the 80s with a focus on STEM education. And again, it was really cool for me to listen to all the different STEM-type pathways, but again, there's lots of other ways to be successful. And so WA and his wife Claire really had a vision, and were thinking about and talking about STEM education, and what I would describe as technology-based learning, hands-on learning that we're going back to. I mean, when I went to school, we all sat in rows and read textbooks. So in any event, the DART Foundation, since its inception, has given about $80 million. And the most recent program that we're launching nationwide is a large STEM grant, and I reached out proactively to several districts in this area that we knew had a good reputation, we'd have a good working environment with. And we came to a project that worked really well, and the DART Board awarded Grand Ledge Public Schools $125,000 for 516 Chromebooks and four carts for your third to sixth grade classrooms, and four elementary buildings. It met well with your strategic needs and our grant parameters, so it was a really awesome, awesome fit. So really, again, I just want to thank everybody in the room. I started out that way, but I think on a night like tonight, it's, it's really important to remember how many different people touch the lives of those young students. It's one thing to walk in and bring money, and that's very helpful to, to adding to making a more robust learning environment, but there's also a lot of other stuff that goes into that. And, you know, that's, that's volunteers, that's teachers, that's parenting, that's mentors, I could go on and on. So with that, I want to thank you and just remind you of that from somebody standing external to it. So it's my honor on behalf of Ariane Dart, who's our Board Chair and the whole DART Foundation Board, to award the Grand Ledge Public Schools $125,000 for your Chromebook initiative.
Thank you.
And we planned the evening well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a little detail, and thank you again, Emily, just a little detail. What the gift has translated into for us at Grand Ledge is actually we were able to purchase five Chromebook carts for each of our one-four elementary or one-six elementary buildings. So Wakusta, Willow Ridge, Beagle, and Delta Center each will receive five new Chromebook carts. Those have already been purchased. There's one of the new Chromebooks sitting right in front of Mr. DeShane on the table. So those have actually already come in and we're going to start working on disseminating and getting those out to the buildings. So thank you again to the DART Foundation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I don't want to do anything else. How do you top that? I mean, yeah. But the sheet of paper says I have to. So that will bring us to the reports section. And I would love to hear a Capitol Connection report this evening.
Capitol Connections. House bills 5828 through 5830 are actually, they just passed, the House and are moving to the Senate. It's on the School Safety Commission with a coordinating program with Michigan State Police, also working with the Comprehensive School Safety Plan Fund. And that is to provide grants to improve school building safety. There are additional safety requirements that will go into play for any school, new school builds or remodels. And it's also supporting the extension of the OK to Say program. House bills 59, 66, and 67 are about the School Safety Grant Act. That has to do with reporting credible threats to any of our schools and to higher school resource officers and mental health professionals. That's been referred to the House Committee on Law and Justice and has continued to be discussed. There's a work-based learning House Bill 4106. It's currently in the Senate Committee of Economic Development and International Investment. They pa- excuse me, they passed it, so it's moving to the full Senate. That allows students in grades nine through 12 to participate in internships and work experience for high school credit. They do need to meet certain criteria, the programming as well as the students. The House Bill 5942 and 5967 are establishing graduated penalties for threats of violence against schools. Again, there's several of these bills that are linked to one another. The governor has signed legislation of the House Bills 5530 through 5532, and that has to do with requiring students convicted of sexual assaults that they cannot attend the same school or ride bus as a victim, also dealing with expelling or suspending students who are convicted or adjudicated in regard to criminal sexual conduct, possibly up to permanently expelling from districts. House Bill 4422 extends the sunset clause on critical shortage for substitute teachers that allows retirees to work without losing their benefits and extended the retirement window by one year for those who retired between June 30th of 2010 and September 1st of 2016. There's also an eight-bill package that is currently in the House. House Bills 5598 through 5605, and those are dealing with the teacher prep mandates. And there's quite a variety and they're still debating those, so I didn't list all of those. That is House Bill 4422. Yep. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Also, there, I will note that there is no Eaton ReesA report this evening as they won't meet until Wednesday. And we normally do our report from them at the end of the month. But we did go to the Capital Area School Board Association meeting at the Crown Plaza and reviewed their budget and saw the budget presentation. And I've been, continued to be impressed by the turnaround at the Eaton ReesA now that it is under new management. And how about an education foundation report?
We will be meeting tomorrow night at 7:00.
Outstanding. And Grand Ledge Parks and Recreation.
I don't think we have anybody assigned to that at this point. Patrick, I think it stepped down and we have yet.
I haven't been able to have a replacement. I thought you were staying on until a replacement. At this point, you're still technically the person who is assigned to that committee. And we will have a superintendent's report.
Okay, a couple of items. First of all, Grand Ledge High School junior Isabella Gentillozzi was recently named one of the five nationwide finalists in the John F. Kennedy Profiles and Courage Essay Contest. Her essay was one of about 2,000 submitted from across the country. Bella is the first student from Grand Ledge High School to ever receive this national honor. Her essay, "John Austin, A Man For All Students," was written as part of her AP Language and Composition Class with Mr. Jeff Belding. And tomorrow, WLNS will be at the high school to record one of their "Tell Me Something Good" segments featuring Bella and her accomplishments. So congratulations, Bella. Next, it's hard to believe, but with, you know, we saw the top 25. Another year is quickly coming to a close. With that, the Grand Ledge High School will be graduating on June 1st at 7:00 PM. For all of those in the audience that's planning on attending, please understand that the MSU has a very strict policy that they're implementing. There's no purses, no bags. They're going to have everybody go through metal detectors, so it's going to be a first for a lot of us because normally in the past, we've kind of walked down that big tunnel and nobody has been there to challenge what's under your robe or anything else. This is going to be a much different feel for our graduates and a much different feel for anybody and everybody walking into the Breslin.
Under the robe?
I was not using it that literally. No, no, I think it's going to be a real pain. I foresee a lot of hassle in trying to get that many parents and graduates with cameras and camera bags. Everybody that shows up and they expect to be able to go into a very nice celebration. And our security has been, I shouldn't say our security, I think I'll say MSU's security has really been stepped up and it's going to have a different feel for anybody visiting the Breslin. Finally, I will mention that we launched a survey last Friday. We really asking our community and our staff and our parents for input, suggestions, ideas, and feedback in regards to some of the ideas that were provided through our focus groups over the past four months. And this feedback really is in regards to, A, restructuring the district. And the conversation, as the Board knows, has been moving to a K-4 elementary building with a 5-6 middle school, a 7-8 junior high, and then obviously the 9-12 high school. Along with that would come some of the infrastructure that we have to have in order to make that happen, specifically at Beagle, some upgrades that we would do at Holbrook, some other area infrastructure, heating units, you know, all the things that come along with keeping up a district of this size. So that survey was launched on Friday and closes on June 1st. So there's about three weeks for parents, community staff, students. If students want to take the survey, anybody and everybody's welcome to go in and provide feedback. There's lots of spaces there for them to type in and say, "I think you ought to think about something else." So there is opportunity for them to give all kinds of information. Of course, there's also the opportunity to email. We've provided my email address and they can certainly send us information. If it's not, if the survey's not the format they like, they can certainly get us other information in other ways.
Is there another way that we're going to be offering community members to participate other than online?
You know, we'll have forums throughout. I think this is really where we're looking at getting the masses to give us some data because everybody has the single opinion, but now we're trying to measure 20,000 people's opinions. And I think once we have that on June 1st, when that closes, we're going to come back and we've asked GMB to really put that into a report to bring it back and present it to the Board. So if there's people in the audience that would like to have more information, they certainly can come to a Board meeting and provide more information. They can hear the report and then they can give more feedback that way.
Suppose they want a hard copy of it, Brian, if they don't have access to a computer?
Of the survey?
Yes.
I'm certain we can get them a hard copy of the survey, absolutely. We'll print one and have it available in our office. So I haven't heard that request yet, but we most certainly will accommodate anybody.
It's available.
Absolutely, we'll make it available, yeah. The idea is to gather as much input and suggestions. With that, I'll share that we are also reaching out to staff. We've got music teachers coming in tomorrow, Wednesday. We've got 5th and 6th grade staff we've invited in to say, "Okay, what would it mean for 5th and 6th grade to be at Haze and what would that look like from an instructional piece?" We've got kindergarten teachers on the agenda to say, "Hey, you know, what's it look like to be back in a K-4 model as opposed to a self-contained building?" Help me out, we've got some others. So I guess the easiest way to put this is we're looking for a lot of input from a lot of people to say, "What do we need to do if we're looking at restructuring? What do we need to do in regards to infrastructure across this district?" We do, you know, bond so seldom that we want to make sure we get it right and we want to make sure that we don't include things we don't need, but we also don't want to leave something out that's, you know, in desperate, desperate need. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the public comment on non-agenda items. And that closes public comment on non-agenda items. Then we have new business. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the payment of sinking fund invoices.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the payment of sinking fund invoices in the amount of $112,000, $112,064.84 as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
And this has to do with carpet replacement at the high school in several classrooms, chiller replacement at Beagle, and some heat and cooling coils that broke at the high school.
I would note that the vast majority of that is the tremendous giant-sized chiller at Beagle. All right, so a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
I would like to just make one comment on that. I'm glad to see that we are going to be using a local contractor, Myers Plumbing, for that outfit.
Myers Plumbing does a lot of work for us. They do a very nice job.
They do.
Excellent. And now an approval of a resolution. I would entertain a motion for approval of a resolution supporting Eaton ReesAs 2018, 2019 CTE and general ed budgets.
I would love to do this one. I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the resolution in support of Eaton ReesAs 2018, 2019 CTE. Now I've got the, that is, Career and Technical Education and the General Education Budgets as presented.
Support. Before we go for a roll call vote, I want to, John, unite.
I was going to say, I was just going to open the floor for discussion.
Yeah. We went to that presentation and I must tell you, I have got to thank the Eaton ReesA Board for their choice in Cindy Anderson as their superintendent. I know you were part of that selection process and I thank you very much because she is really about supporting her constituent school districts in Eaton County. And she's got a lot of good people that, my conversations with them is I would go anywhere with her, you know? Shaun and the new people coming into curriculum and Janet Yakim and just doing a tremendous job, flowing money to where it should go, is the constituent districts. And that is something I don't think in all my years on the Board, I've seen such cooperation with the ISD.
Been a welcome change.
Yeah, yeah, refreshing.
I would have to say too, I wasn't able to go that night for it, but I've spent a lot of time looking at the Eaton ReesA budget and over the years wondering how we got so little service from them. And the last, I think, three years now, maybe four, it has been a dramatic change. And she really came in and began making the changes on all fronts. And just want to say that when we were watching the sort of upheaval before she came, people would say, "Well, you know, change is difficult and the conflict you're seeing and all the chaos is because people resist change." And people do, but there's a way to change where you get people to buy in. And Cindy Anderson really did immediately get the trust of the districts and the staff and just on every front, she sort of went at it. And I, there was a lot of change without any chaos. And in fact, I think you all remember that for two years, Grand Ledge was getting a fairly high, more than a million dollar distribution from Eaton ReesA that we passed along to staff as bonuses. And because they looked at their budget and realized what little service we got and some other performance questions and some changes in formula. And so as a result, Grand Ledge is getting a lot more service for kids that, you know, we shouldn't have six-year-olds who are having, who are suffering and not being able to get service. And she's really put a dent in that for us.
Another piece that I was very impressed with was the Career and Technical Education portion of their programs. They are doing amazing things and opening avenues for students that weren't in existence. That was what really struck me from attending that. It was very impressive and she's very, very considerate of all the factors that go into making the decisions and very impressive.
And you know, she's not afraid to, she's not isolated. She's good at partnering with other ISDs, for instance, Ingham County, where she came from.
Huge amount.
She really does, so there's no reason where you can't share information.
You know, and in fact, by the way, it might be worth mentioning here because I don't know if this is the kind of rumor that was one person or whether this is something out in the community, but I was in a business in Grand Ledge a few weeks ago and a man said to me that Grand Ledge wasn't what it used to be and one of the reasons is we got rid of shop class. And I said, "You know, shop class now is an entirely different thing to get a student ready to work in a world of manufacturing." And we don't do it in our buildings because LCC partnering with Eaton ReesA has put in a lot of very advanced automotive and, gosh, I'm just trying to think. There's just a lot of stuff that's there that involves a lot of technology that we need the economies of scale and Grand Ledge would never make sense to do it on our own. So it just surprised me when someone said, "We don't have shop class anymore." And I thought, "Well, in one way, we don't because it's not, it's kind of an artifact of the past, but what we really have is a much more robust offering that our kids are, and we've got quite a few kids who have the opportunity now." And that's what CTE does.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Dr. Metcalf, would you do the roll?
Mrs. DeFort.
Yes.
Mr. Shiflett.
Yes.
Mrs. Mulvena.
Yes.
Mrs. Clark Pearson.
Yes.
Mr. Quina.
Yes.
Mrs. Win Stanley.
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon.
Yes.
Motion carries. It's nice to be approving or submitting a resolution in support of their budget once again.
That's true.
All right, that brings us to public comment on agenda items. Do you want the rules read?
No, I think I know. Melissa Mazzola, 320 North Clinton. I just wanted, regarding the approval of the sinking, not the sinking funds, of the Eaton ReesA, was it more or less than what we received last year? And can we get like the amount of the, what was in the budget for Grand Ledge?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
So for the Eaton ReesA budget and the amount of money, like I know that they break it down and they do, we get a certain amount of money. I'm just curious, more or less than last year, equal? And if there is a dollar amount on that?
It needs to be from Eaton Reesah. Last year, we received more, closer to almost a million dollars from them last year. But now that their fund balance has actually kind of settled to the point where they want to keep it at that distribution, more than likely would be minimal.
Similar to 222 or less than that?
We get it. We may not even be using, I mean, the same distribution. If their fund balance stays at the two percent, the local district will not receive.
Yeah. The reality was, they did not know how much they had. Their accounting was so terrible.
So now that they've spent it?
They have looked at it and said, "We were not..."
They didn't spend it, that wasn't the issue.
We were not...
They have more control.
Yeah, they were not aware of what was happening, what was there, and now that, when they got control, they said, "All right, we should give this back to the constituent districts, because we were not serving their children the way we should have." So they have basically doled that out almost on a per pupil basis, so that, you know, Grand Ledge would get about half, we're about half the size of the county.
Gotcha.
So we still got about half from this year, the other districts divided that up, but I believe that they have a much better control over their accounts, and we're going to see that be closer to zero. I was actually surprised that they had excess this year.
Okay. I just thank you for clarifying. I've worked with Celia.
Absolutely.
All right. Comments from staff and board? Let's start with the staff.
I had one today. You know, it was kind of quickly dealt with when Dart was here, but we ended up increasing their, our plan by 20% in terms of what we could get from the $125,000. The Technology Readiness Infrastructure Grant laid down some groundwork for some device purchasing, one of their activities was device purchasing, of which we took good advantage of. The residual effect is that they worked with the RMC Association, and they have continued the process beyond that timeframe. So the price of these Chromebooks dropped $50 only because of the process in which the RMC Association goes through to prices on it.
And RMC, is that the consortium of districts? I'm not sure what RMC is.
That's a, I was trying to look, I think, oh, it's the Regional Education Media Center Association, so it was initially around media centers, but it's expanded to do a lot more services than just media centers. So one of the things they've had for a very long time is device purchasing, but they refined that process to drive costs even farther down. So I'm really excited that, we were planning four carts per building, and now we have five carts per building just because of that association's work, so I appreciate them.
Is that to the elementary buildings?
Just to clarify, is that to the elementary buildings?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So Wacousta, Willow Ridge, and Delta Center.
And Beagle.
And Beagle, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to, oh, I just want to congratulate the students who are here, our top 25 students for the class of 2018. I agree with John, this is my favorite board meeting of the year, when we get to see them. And that group happened to be freshmen my last year as high school principal, so it was pretty, pretty neat to see where they've ended up. So congratulations to all of them and all of the graduates of the class of 2018.
I would echo that and also reiterate Bella Gentillozzi. You'll see that article in the Friday update, and you'll also see it Twitter and Facebook. We'll get it posted out for everybody to read. She did a really nice job.
Anybody else?
I don't think I can add to that, other than my extreme thanks to Dart Bank, the Dart Foundation for their generous gift to our district. I've seen a grant of that amount, or a gift of that amount, I think, once, and that's it. So that was, that was a nice surprise, so thank you.
I did notice she took the check.
And it's been cashed.
Who actually made the application for that? Dr. Gabriel, you were the brains of the outfit?
I don't know if I'd go that far.
Yeah, I'm not sure I would either. Yeah, he's a doctor now.
Try this again. We presented as part of the application four different possible projects, and that, they encourage us to do that, and then their team looks at it, and then they kind of approve what they wanted, and that's what they chose to go with. I have been told that we may have the opportunity to apply again for future grants, so we will continue to pursue that.
I just want to say thank you again to all the individuals who are involved in educating these students that we see at the end of their four years of high school. It's not just one group, but indeed an entire colony of educators in this school district. I just, it's nice to be reminded that many people had their finger in the results that we're seeing here today, and I'd just like to say thank you.
It is actually kind of amazing how many different staff from the district, like, impacted each one of those kids, just from kindergarten through everything, one of the teachers, and the parapros, and everybody, like, man, that's a lot of people. It goes by.
Bus drivers, food service, custodians.
Custodians, yes, absolutely.
Everybody has a lot of work to do to make them have the opportunities, provide the opportunities, yeah.
Yes, in the school board. Anything else? Is there a good applause? All right, future topics. The class of 2018 graduation is Friday, June 1st, 2018, 7:00 p.m. at the MSU Breslin Center. Board of Education members are encouraged to arrive by 6:45, although, given what we've heard about medical detectors and parking, it may be, it may be who of you two arrives slightly earlier. Then there is a board bond advisory meeting, Monday, June 11th, at 28, June 11th, 2018, at 5:30 p.m. here at Sodden in room 107. And then a work session immediately following, Monday, June 11th, 2018, 6:00 p.m. in the administrative conference room. With that, we are adjourned, 6:55 p.m., 6:56.